Uh, nineteen hundred or seven P M., uh, call us meeting to order. Roll call please, Kevin.
Alderman Angel, Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Here.
Alderman Mackley.
Yes.
Alderman Sidens.
Here.
Alderman Wilkins.
Present.
Alright, good evening, thank you for coming tonight. Uh, we do have a forum, official business can't take place. I did wanna, uh, state that John Angel is not here due to the passing of his mother-in-law. So, in the next few days, weeks, please keep him and his family in your thoughtful prayers. Please join me for a pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Consent agenda? Any noticeable changes need to be made on the agenda?
Except for the tackle.
Except for the tackle previously.
They will be corrected.
Thank you. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion, second to approve the consent agenda. Call us if you have a staff.
Aye.
Close. Accounts payable over twelve fifty? Questions? That's the one that was revised today, is that?
Yes.
I move we approve the accounts payable over one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in a grand total of three hundred seventy-one thousand, four hundred eighty-two dollars, forty-one cents.
Just a second.
I have a motion, second to approve the accounts payable over twelve fifty in the amount of three hundred seventy-one thousand, four hundred eighty-two dollars and forty-one cents. Call us if you have a staff.
Aye.
Close. Alright, comments from citizens? Please state your name and, uh, address for the record and approach my phone.
I'm Don Bagley, seven eleven East Sprigs and Trail. Uh, recently I had a occasion to go on a visit to Wisconsin for family. While I was there, I got a telephone call from my elderly mother who had fallen. She told me she was unhurt, that she couldn't get up. I called our police department and asked them if they could help me in any way, and within minutes, they were there and had her up. And I wanna thank Larry and our police department for that.
It's very kind of sir.
Thank you very much.
They write tickets, they enforce laws, and it's nice to know that when you need them, they're there to help. And I wanted you to know that.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that, sir. Thank you.
Think our, uh, our police department gets his share of, of negative comments and is always very nice and reassuring to have some positive comments come before the board. So, thank you, Dylan.
Take care of yourself, man.
Yes, and, uh, spoke a little bit before the meeting, I understand your mother's doing well?
Yes.
So, alright. Glad to hear that. Thank you. Alright, any more comments from citizens? Alright, close that. Economic Development Report, Portman Chamber. Got an email from Ginny earlier today that's saying she's suffering from, uh, migraines, so she isn't going to be meeting tonight. So, she did say that the, uh, Anchorfest and Barbeque contest are, uh, playing pages.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, those are traditional events. It looks like the bike con trials will be held again and will become an, or an annual event.
Okay, okay.
At the fall.
Very good.
We also, I believe, had in your packet, uh, minutes from the Board of Directors and the program will work for two thousand thirteen, fifteen.
Okay.
From the chamber. So, I think I'll check the dates on that. They have not requested their, um, payment from the city under the contract yet. It will be made probably next month.
Okay.
And I believe that for next year, we do not need, I believe we renewed the contract last March, so I don't believe that we need to deal with their contract.
Okay.
But I would check if we do, it'd be taken up with the board also.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have cameras recruits?
Yeah. Is it not in here, huh? Yeah, I don't see it in here either.
What's that?
The, the, what, is it in there?
It was in what Phyllis gave me. It was, uh, um, chamber of how much minutes, uh, and the program will work for two thousand thirteen.
I have the agenda and I have the details twice.
You guys noticed a special election for, that's the last page.
But that's, it's, it's, it's wilder on the, uh, than I was.
Around twenty-six to twenty-nine.
While you were listening, Mr. Chance, I was gonna make hard copies for you.
Okay, thank you.
Don't make copies for me, I already got it. Direct the office.
Okay.
One of the things that they mentioned, you can just take this.
Alright. Alright, presentation about Civil War reenactment event. Mr. Chance, just carry with it his group.
Hey. I'm gonna use this one.
Okay.
Len Lafferty? Mayor and City Councilman and ladies and Larry, we, uh, here, here to present to you what we're planning for a reenactment of the Centralia Battle. It is will be September twen- uh, September thirteenth and fourteenth, and, uh, we are really just now getting into full blast. We'll be working on this almost every day from now on. I have, uh, Phil Wolfhook is here and, um, Charlie Cunningham, they're both, uh, reenactors. Charlie's on the State Board of the Missouri Reenactors Association, Phil used to be. And, uh, they'll be supporting us and, uh, I happen to have come up with a map, uh, all on my own. Charlie did his, he's got it there, and all on his own, and they're identical. Now, how that happened, I don't know. But, um, I would like to just start off talking of one little thing about the Battle of Centralia, because a lot of people don't know of its importance. In your little packet, which you don't need to be reading until we get into a little bit of the finances, but, uh, Frank James came back to Centralia. Of course, he participated in the battle. He came back about thirty-three years after the battle, and this is report of about everything he said. He came to Centralia and he went with the fireside guard and a number of reporters. Uh, there's only one little statement I wanna read in here. He said, "The only battles in the world's history to surpass Centralia are Theosvay and the Alamo." Now, that's the big mouthful, but that was Frank James. So, we're not talking about a little skirmish out here, which a lot of people have talked about, that they're a bunch of guerrillas that ran into some Union soldiers and so on. This is a historic battle that took place, and we're honored to be able to come and do a reenactment. This is our third time that we've done this, and every time, the city of Centralia has been extremely helpful. What I would like to do is, you can have a packet that's got all kinds of things you can kinda read on your own. There's some things that Booneville did, a report of how large their operation was. The, the, the reenactment itself is gonna be just as big right here in Centralia as what they did in Booneville, but they had about a hundred and fifty people that worked on the project. Phil and, and Charlie and I wish we had about a hundred people to work on it, but anyhow, uh, if you glance through this, it tells a little bit about the history of the battle and all. This has a semi-financial report. I don't even wanna, you know, pretend that this is a complete report. If you turn to this reenactment page, we're starting out with some dollar figures of, of the number of activities of, of which the reenactors are requiring us to do for them. They're, they're coming here on their own time and, and they're taking, uh, their own horses and, and their own work and spending the nights and so on, but we have to provide certain things for them so that we can, we can, uh, come up with, with this, you know, enhancing, bringing them come to, to us. And I don't know, Phil, if you have seen this, but Charlie and I have been talking about even giving them a little bit of money. They're not being paid to do this, but, 'cause it, it's really, you know, their activity, like to do, but we've thrown in a few dollars here, hopeful to, to enhance them coming to us. Do you have one of the, I guess you don't, does, do you have an extra copy?
That's alright.
Well, uh, why don't you just look at that? Those are a few of the items that we have listed of, of requirements for us to provide for the reenactors. Phil, what do you think? Is that the, the total limit, or is that just about a half of it? This is the first time Phil has seen this. But there are just numerous things that, that we need to provide for the reenactors. Uh, their horses, uh, we're providing, uh, uh, the, the cannons are coming. We, we hope we, we have a probably, what, Charlie, you think, eight to ten cannons?
Okay, we should, eight to ten cannons.
And, uh, as usual, what most of the reenactors, they expect to bring cannons and a little bit of financial support, those are extremely expensive items to bring, as well as the horses are, are expensive as well. So, these are rough figures, 'cause we don't know how many are coming at this point. We can hope that there'll be even more. What do you think, Phil? Is that, do you think that's one?
It's a good estimate, start with, you know.
Okay. Uh, let, let me just show you my drawing here a little bit. Can you see it from up here? I'll try to bring it around.
Hold it up.
Well, yeah, Phil, that'd be nice if you, uh...
Let me hold it up back there. So, where you can...
Okay, can you all see, can you see it? Here, here's our, our acreage that we have that was given to us by...
Actually like that.
Well, well, in North, yeah. Uh, this, this area right in here i- is what, uh, Red Moore has donated to the Friends of the Battlefield, uh, and this is where the battle took place. You come in, and being, this has got me kinda mixed up in direction, but that's alright. Uh, this is Audrain County here, this is Audrain County, Boone County line. Our parking will be right as you come off of, uh, the, uh, Range Line Road. Present, we have a road end that comes down for a parking lot. And in this kinda area here, we, we will have some vendors, people who provide the food, and their, their wares, uh, people who have made things. Uh, and this little green area, we're gonna have speakers come, we're gonna have some, obviously, music, we're gonna have people that, uh, are historians, we're gonna have book writers, uh, hopefully five or six people who have written books about, uh, the battles, uh, which includes Centralia. Uh, we're putting in a temporary bridge that Jim's gonna build, uh, to, to handle the traffic. Uh, our little footbridge is, is way too small, so we have to build a bridge, and, and we don't have to pay for the construction and, and the materials for it. You come onto the battlefield, actually where the battle took place, and we will have shovels that kinda take us around. This area down here, at, at the far west end, is, uh, where the encampment will be. And, uh, Charlie will explain a little bit in details what all goes in to where, where the, the encampment is, where they have the settlers and have their own little village, so to speak, where the horses will be, where the cannons will be. He will talk about that. We're very lucky compared to most, any of the other places that have put on reenactments, because they're scattered out all over the place. And we're, we're very fortunate to be able to do it on the actual site where the battle took place. That's not done very often, especially when you go, if you go to Gettysburg, you think you're gonna go to the Battle of Gettysburg, you're not there at all. They, they can't have that on the battlefield, but we are, and, uh, we were talking about having bleachers, to watch it, I don't think, get that off of there. Charlie didn't think we needed bleachers, so we'll, we'll get rid of the bleachers.
How's he?
But we will have, uh, some bleachers up here, because this is where we're gonna have speakers and, and music. Speaking about music, we're gonna have probably four or five bands that'll be playing. Do you think you better go?
I, I've heard that all this I've been there. I'll be right back, I think it's fire.
Yeah, it's fire, just go by.
There's a local group from Booneville that are one of the top Civil War music, uh, groups in the country. Uh, and, um, Kathy and Dave, well, I've already, uh, said that they'll be here and they just wanna know how much time, well, how much money too. We gotta figure that in. Uh, but, but they're terrific, and we'll have other bands that'll be down in, in this area where Charlie's gonna talk about, there'll be a dance. And at that dance, of course, we'll have to have a band, uh, in music for it. I have a few dollars in here for, for the speakers, the authors, and the historians that'll come and speak. Uh, the next page is, is the insurance, that's a pretty well-set figure, one of the few. Um, will be around nine hundred dollars. Now, that, that, this is our insurance, not, not the reenactors. The reenactors, that's another insurance program. Is that right, Charlie?
It's, it's, we've already paid that.
We've already paid that, okay. I'm gonna skip advertising just for a minute, and, and we have to build a stage, in the area where the bleachers will be down here, up here, uh, for the, the music and for the speakers, for people that, that, will be have a platform to speak from. The sound system or, you know, and, these are all incidentals of which I don't really know, uh, they're not gonna be very much. Uh, we're gonna need some photographers. We wanna record this this time extremely well, where we'll have all kinds of videos and, and photographs for future. Okay, uh, now that takes care unfortunately about what we're looking at of, of expenses. I don't throw in the, the sanitation, the board, uh, bodies and, and, uh, I guess we're not gonna get charged by the sheriff or the police or fire, we have to have them here. Waterline, we're gonna have to run a water line to the area. Uh, the temporary bridge, Jim says probably around less than eight hundred dollars. So, it comes to about forty-two thousand, and you're gonna say, how'd that jump up so quick? Well, it's called advertising. At this kinda late of the date, and I don't know how we could've done it any better, you start too soon and, and people aren't gonna even pay much attention to you. We're about seven months out right now, and I've hired a professional advertising agency in Columbia that I've known for a number of years and know that some of the work that they've done, and you've probably seen a number of the TV commercials and so on. I figure that, that is the key to a successful operation, it is being able to get the word out, go to the right people at the cheapest amount of money that, 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 uh, we can possible, uh, take. And we're gonna have the program set up with them in which we have a target figure of around twenty thousand. However, we're gonna go as far as we can with the money that we do have when we get the money. So, as, as time goes on, if we have more funds to, to put into advertising, uh, and we feel it necessary, we'll go ahead and, and add to the advertising program. But that is the key, to get the word out to the people all over the state and even out of state. And I, I, I think I have the right guy who, who's gonna give us the biggest bang for the bucks. It is, uh, his name is Tom Baker, and he's been at the advertising game for a long time. So, outside of that, uh, there's the publications that, on a national basis, that, that we are gonna need to get involved in. I think, uh, James will be aware of this company here that might put this newspaper out. They happen to own the Centralia Guard, and, uh, it's, it's a very good paper that, uh, is all Civil War oriented. So, from that, from local advertisement to, to national advertisement, we're gonna try to do the best job we can for the cheapest amount. Now, we, we have any questions that...
Do you have any more copies of this?
I, Jim can try to make up. No, that, that...
The reason I ask is I, I deal with the, uh, museum coordinator there, now the next film producer, and, uh, I've talked to him several times about, about the Battle of Centralia.
Okay.
And, uh, I think if I can, if I believe in his hand, it will...
We are going to put together a special, uh, brochure on the battle. That will be part of our, it's in our advertising budget, we'll be putting that together. And I think that'll be more beneficial than, this is kinda half scattered around with different things in it that's got Booneville in it and other kinds of, and it may not be important.
Okay. Jack, you said that, uh, this is going to be, uh, the third reenactment, and it's, it's going to be a few weeks shy of the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the battle? Is that correct?
It's not on the twenty-seventh, as, as you pointed out very astutely, and you can add, good merit, appreciate that. The problem is, we've got is on the same date, on September twenty-seventh, the same day of our battle, there was a battle down at Pilot Knob, which they had about five thousand on one side and about nine thousand on the other. It's kinda hard for us to go against the reenactment that, that, in the original. And the fact is, they tie it together. What happened was that Sterling Price, the Confederate general, was coming in from Arkansas, and he was coming up north, and he had gotten with the guerrillas and had the guerrillas destroy the lines of communication. They weren't just acting on their own here in Centralia. That, it wasn't a bunch of bank robbers and, and nuts a lot of people think they were. They were working on orders of Sterling Price. They wanted to destroy the lines of communication, movement of troops and so on. So, Sterling Price could march these troops up through mid-Missouri and then take Jefferson City. Well, he got his Waterloo, unfortunately, the same day Centralia was having, uh, their big battle. And he straggled up and, two battles later, he ended up at Roat, at, uh, Westport. That was the end of the Confederacy in the state of Missouri.
The, the two previous reenactments before this were, could you go into that a little bit, Jack?
Well, the first one we had was, uh, o- over by, uh, the park, the, the park on, on the east side of town. And, uh, that was really done mainly because of the mayor of Centralia, was a big promoter of it, and it worked out extremely well, he did a great job. That was our first attempt. Then in oh-five, we did it on the battlefield, and that was the first time we'd gone out to the battlefield. And that's when Mr. Moore decided that, he thought it was a great idea to dedicate that land for future generations to come out and actually see what the battlefield looks like. So, we progressed since then, and the Friends of Centralia Battlefield made a number of improvements on the battlefield itself. So, Mary, is that, just across the top, you wanted to know? We're, we're planning on, they had an estimate of three, of thir- of three thousand to four thousand people that came to the oh-five. I'm hopeful that we can get in around five thousand to six thousand with proper advertising, and, uh, I, I, I think because this is a hundred and fiftieth anniversary, susceptible to continual of the Civil War, that, uh, it's, it's a big interest.
Are you telling me about first?
We'll bring a lot of people into Centralia. This is an economic, it, it, it is an educational, and it's for fun.
The numbers you were giving were participants, not the audience?
No, the audience.
Like that?
Oh, I, yeah. Now, we had probably, who, what would you say, a hundred and fifty reenactors?
Uh, it was more like two hundred.
Doing it oh-five, right. And that was pretty good, but this time, we're gonna try to get how many?
We're hoping to get a, you, you never know with reenacting, I'm sorry, but it's a hobby. It is not a thing.
A lot of it will depend on work schedules, a lot of it will depend on, well, we're going to Pilot Knob and we're also doing this one. Do we wanna do that third one this month? Can we afford to do that third one this month?
How many would you like to, to, how many reenactors would you like to have come?
I'm, I'm expecting close to four hundred at least.
That's what we're shooting for.
I cannot guarantee that, but still, I'd say, it all, a lot depends on economy and stuff like that, how things do there, I mean, it's...
And how many phone calls we make.
That puts it on a scale with the actual number of, of people in the battle, right?
Yeah, it would.
Yeah, uh, Charlie come forward and, and...
I'll make one point just before we start that. The, just for your own info, I have been researching the Centralia area since day one, or thirty-some years. So far, I've documented five engagements that took place in and around Centralia. We've got two of them marked now. The battlefield and the Battle of Riggs Run up at Tri-City. That one, and there's also another one that I'm still working on that's out by Fountain Cemetery, uh, that actually made, I, I hate to put it this way, but a smaller scale, it made the Battle of Centralia look like a cape walk. It was a total annihilation as far as Union troops were concerned. They caught him in a crossfire on the road.
Uh, before we get into that, we're, we are required to have two different reenactments, and the second one that's never been done before, on, on Sunday, we're hoping and, and working towards the, the Battle of Mount Zion. That's just south of Hallsville, on a cemetery where there was a big battle. It was early in the Civil War, and there, again, there was a number, I don't know what figure, six hundred, uh, eight hundred on, on, on both sides. Uh, that was a big battle, and we're trying to put together that type of a reenactment. And with that, I'll get, turn it over to Charlie and Phil Soliken.
What, hold it, that's backwards. Yeah, it's backwards.
What our intentions are is, right here, anybody's been out to the battlefield, so like it, there's a ticket fence, it's still like that, way around the back of the thing.
Split rail.
Split rail. We're, our intentions are to build a temporary wooden church, but hopefully it looks kinda like a little cannon out here on the field that will be disassembled and taken away and stuff. And then we're gonna make tombstones and stuff out here. So, this church will be functioning. It's still like that, that way, that's for Sunday. It was also, we could use this for communications and everything else being done in the side of this building. Like I said, with a battle on Sat- Saturday, so like it, we're gonna do the same. We'll do a, we have to have two battles, basically two battles each day, because we're asking for a maximum event. A maximum event requires every branch of service to be able to come and play. Well, everybody likes the cannons. Well, cannons weren't used in neither one of our small battles, or we call us the Battle of Centralia and Mount Zion, neither one of them had cannons. So, our intentions are to do them early in the day, do the first one at Centralia on Saturday, that afternoon, do an afternoon battle. And that way, we'll have the cannons firing, the, uh, horses and everything riding, just like that. Do it. Another reason we're talking about doing the Mount Zion, and I'm really trying for it, is everybody yelled, "Centralia was a massacre, Centralia was a massacre." The Confederates killed all the Union. At Mount Zion, it was the other way. A lot of the Confederates weren't even listed, they were still civilians going into this area, Union town about, they rode in and started killing them. They basically killed most of the people there, men there. They called that a battle. I wanna show people, let them understand that both sides did atrocities in the Civil War, and make sure that people understand that it was a bad time for everybody, but yet, it was still part of our history that we all grew better out of it. That's why I wanted to do this here, put 'em together, so people can see. Yes, like I said, it costs a lot of money. Like I said, what we're wanting to do is, all the modern stuff is on this side of the creek. At night, and stuff like that, you cannot see, or in the daytime, you cannot see hardly any modern stuff at all out here in the summertime.
Which is rare for us. Usually you see something.
We're gonna have the encampment, the settlers, main settlers, to be set up in a square, or a big area right in here, leaving this open for a grass area. Then we would have a, a, at night, a, a dance. Everything, have like a, a little city square there. I'm wanting to make Centralia like it was in the eighteen hundreds. A lot of times you go to a reenactment, it's still like that, they want the streets all laid out. In eighteen hundreds, when the city was built, none of the streets... In 1800s, when the city was built, none of the streets were the same. It's whoever built their house first, whichever way they wanted it to face, that was the front of the house. So the reenactors are gonna actually have time, this, this one place, they could come in, set their tents up, as long as we have streets, I'm gonna make streets, so you cannot set in for fire lanes. Their tents could be in any direction. Spectators can walk in at any time, visit, stuff like that, and that's what the reenactors like.
Essentially, what we're looking for is a civilian town with the businesses in the town. And we have people in our group alone that can do just about any of it.
And like I said, the cavalry, they will be along this tree line here. If an infantry team, infantry unit that wants to come in and they wanna set up just a military style camp, they can set up here or here, whichever way. All the parking and stuff, the reenactors will come in this way. They'll have their vehicles out of here, out of the way, so you can't see them. When you walk across any one of these bridges and come out in the woods, what you're gonna be able to see mainly is this church up here on top of this hill.
Have you ever been out there, that ridge line is so high above you? I can understand how they get high. We're in a real battle.
And then the tent and things will be down over here. And then when people come up, we'll have shuttles and stuff that can bring them, the ones that cannot walk that far and stuff like that. They can ride up here, walk through the camps and stuff. They wanna walk back or whatever and catch the shuttle in different spots. But we're hoping, like I say, I'm hoping to educate the people on a little bit more than just what one thing happened. And having, uh, Jack was saying, Missouri Conservation decided that it was, us reenactors were too hard on the ground, it was costing the park boards too much money. Lexington, we no longer can have a battle on the original ground. They have banned, banned reenactors to have any battles on the original ground because it was too hard. It cost too much money. We know for a fact Lexington is hurting real bad because we quit having it.
The Anderson House is going down because they don't have the, the money coming in anymore.
We, uh, Pilot Knob is the same weekend as the original date, same one that Jack was talking about. The, the original landowners deeded it over to the reenact, to the Conservation with a little clause in their paperwork, that if the reenactment stops, if you stop the reenactment, all the land and stuff that belongs, that is here now, returns to the media family, some family. So they can't stop it on that ground. Uh, two years ago...
There's a school care?
Uh, four, I think it was four years ago, we did the last, last one at Pilot Knob. They had roughly, uh, and it is hard to get down, it's down in Arlington County. It's a hard drive to get there, it's four and a half hour drive from here, basically. There was 20,000, they figured 20,000 spectators on Saturday. I mean, and those people, spectators, they showed up at seven o'clock when we come out of our tents, there was already spectators there. And we know they did not leave until after one o'clock that morning.
One thing we are gonna be doing on Saturday evening, you mentioned having a, a dance in the city square in the suburbs, but we're also gonna have artillery night firing. Which is gonna be, if you've never seen it before, it's worth the trip just to see that.
What we wanna do is, we cannot sell tickets charged for reenactment, that's part of the MCDW rules. You can charge for parking and stuff like that. We're talking about maybe charging $10 per car for the weekend pass. And we would hand out like a piece of paper or something like this. This is still something in the works we're talking about, and we haven't finalized anything on that yet. But that pass would be good for anybody to come and go. It's not, it's an all weekend pass. That way, if there's time, they decide, let's hungry, let's go in town, we come to town, eat or whatever, come back out, it's like that.
They wanna come out Sunday morning for church? They've got a place to park?
The church, it's like that, we're planning on building and maybe having church service there Sunday morning. If we can get this church built, we will tell people that this church is out here now. If anybody would be interested in a church congregation, would like to maybe have a an 1800s or an early 1900s church service out there, they're welcome, they'd be able to...
Well, Mayor, I think you can understand and ultimately enthusiasm of the reenactors. And every time we've had an event basically out at the battlefield, they say, people that come out say, "Well, when are you gonna have a reenactment?" Well, you can't have a reenactment every year and it is tough to even do it 10 years. It takes a lot of help and support and that's why we're, we're here this evening in hopes of, of which you can give us the backing and so on, that, that, that we need to get this off and really running. I might mention one thing that, that hadn't been brought up, but we had two events in Centralia. We had a massacre at the railroad station, which was obviously in town. And then we had the battle later on out at the three miles south. We are not going to reenact the massacre anymore. It, it's just never turned out to be satisfactory, we don't have a train car and it just doesn't work. Uh, we are going to have a historical event about it in which it will be explained, but it will not be part of our reenactment. So is anybody have any questions of, of any one of the three of us, of what, we might clarify any, any questions?
How much advanced, like, was your last one?
Well, the last one, I, I think we relied on what we did the first time. And we didn't really get going until probably three or four months ahead of time. We had to have the date all set up way in advance. But I think we've got nine months, eight and a half months. And with the help of, of our advertising people, that we can get really into this and, and make a tremendous amount of, of effort to getting the word out to people.
But even with that short of time period, how many people came to the last one?
Well, we, you know, we estimated that, now you were out there, why? It was between 3,000, 4,000, you know, we, we didn't have an actual count. We had a number of problems with the parking, we weren't taking in the money properly and the line was backed up, we were ready to start, the time was there. And we had probably 400 cars trying to come in at the time. And so we had to slow things down, and it, it was, we're gonna take care of that, we got it figured out this time. But is there any recommendations that I, I can get from the, because on anything else, so...
Is there an amount you're asking for from the city now, Jack?
Uh, that's a tough, a little tough question. Lynn and I have gone over this, been ones those figures of just, you know, this and that. And as we don't even know how many reenactors are coming, is a problem. We don't know how many of the spectators are gonna be coming. Uh, we have to get on that advertising. I wanna spend approximately at least $20,000 between now and the reenactment on advertising. Promotion, not just advertising, but I mean, all kinds of promotion. That's why we went to a professional this time. We didn't have a professional last time and it kinda showed. But, uh...
But even that, it still came out.
Okay, oh yeah, it was quote unquote successful. None of these make money. I don't care which one you go to, they're, they're not a money maker. This is for the benefit of the public, it's the benefit of the people in town because it increases traffic into Centralia, it gives Centralia an orderality. Those are the side benefits that you can't put any exact dollar figure on. But they'll, when they leave after these two, three days, they'll be talking about it for months. So, uh, our target is, is raising between 40 and 50,000. Uh, we're not just coming to the city or the chamber, we're, I'm gonna be working in Columbia, I'm gonna be working all over the county and everywhere, uh, hopefully to, to bring in some big dollars as well.
Well, I will tell you that, uh, being, sharing in the, my office with the chamber, I have seen people come into the office looking for a brochure on the battlefield and wanting to know how to get there. And I've given more than a few people directions. One guy was a vendor for a chance and he said that, uh, every place he went, he would stop at some of these battlefields. And he wasn't even from Missouri, but, uh, you know, he wanted to know where it was and he was going to visit that as part of his stop here in Centralia.
Well, I have 23 books, 24 books or whatever, on, on the guerrilla warfare. Uh, Jayhawks and guerrillas in, in Missouri and so on. And in at least 20 of those, they all have paragraph, or whole chapters on the Battle of Centralia. The Battle of Centralia is known all over the country.
Have you, have you told them about Dave with his group, Army that comes here every year?
Well, I, well, you obviously tell them about, that we have trained on our battlefield around 600 to 700 US Army sergeants that have come up from Fort Leonard Wood. And they're being trained by the Army on the, on the similarity between insurgents that they were facing over in Iraq and how the guerrillas fought. They're extremely similar in the, in the way they fought. And they, they left every time from here, have a better understanding, comparing it to Bloody Bill Anderson with they're facing over in, in the Middle East.
Several officer candidate classes have come up to Centralia Battlefield also.
Right.
I know that you've had two occasions where you've had fundraisers and you've gotten severe thunderstorms in 90...
Just about 15 minutes before we were ready to start, the sky opened up and drowned us, right?
You have other alternative fundraisers planned between now and then?
Uh, Lynn, at this particular point, I think our fundraising is gonna have to be our fundraising committee going to people and to organizations and banks and so on. And actual fundraising, the fundraiser that Jim so densely worked on twice was a fun type of event. And we always like to have fun type of events. But right now, we're, we are focusing right on getting this reenactment done. And I think that, that I can get the ear of a lot of people, from banks and all kinds of people in Columbia, to help participate. We're, we're not asking the city for everything. I'm gonna put this program on, we're gonna put it on for the, the chamber. Hopefully get some support there. But it's gonna take a lot of work between now and September.
It seems like I remember that you said in the past that they, there are different size reenactments, and this is the largest type of reenactment.
Well, when we talk about the maximum event, yes, that, that is basically, I think that you've, uh, they've kinda done away with those designations now, it is late. But when we're right, uh, required to have cannons and cannon fire, you know, which we didn't have at the Battle of Centralia or at Mount Zion, uh, we're looking to put on a real production.
Then also, we plan on having what you call a night fire. And that is, if you've never seen what those cannons, when you're sitting there watching in the daytime, you see the white smoke come out of them. You don't see, unless you've been around a cannon, you don't know what those things are actually doing. And they put magnesiums, different things in it, in the gunpowder. So when they fire it at night, it's like 4th of July almost. And that shoot, you'll see how far those flames are actually shooting.
During the heat, you'll see it from town.
And it will echo all through this town, it will, people will hear it. I know, uh, Boonville did it, we'll probably have a what you call a media night on Thursday night. And, or Friday, one of the nights. And we'll be doing a small one, we'll fire a few times just so people can hear it, reporters can report it and stuff like that, show what these things gonna, what, here's what two of, two or three of them sound like, come out and see maybe six to eight of them going off it together. Well, speaking of Boonville, how many people did they have and what was their budget?
Well, right off, the budget was over 80,000. And they had the same number of days that we're having. And, and we're having almost identical type of operations that they had. They had a number of little sideline events, they had a show where Chris Edwards put on a musical and so on. A lot of other little things, but as far as a reenactment, they're not, they didn't, not gonna do anything bigger in Boonville than what we're doing in Centralia. So, uh, they, they had a casino over there that kinda kicked in a little bit. But, you know, we just appreciate, you know, the opportunity to come before the city council and, and talk to you and hopefully get you as energized as, as, as these guys are. It, it's gonna be a very, very big event.
Excuse me, just a second, I gotta turn the camera off, let it cool down for about 15 seconds, turn it back on. Otherwise, the second half of this meeting won't have any sense.
Don't worry, he helped him. Somebody has to organize it.
We're back.
Okay.
The Boy Scouts will be helping too.
You got Boy Scout, uh, I'm hopeful that, that they have the US Army, uh, at least the, the guard that come there at Boonville, they brought a cannon out or a cannon to Boonville. We'd like to line that up with, no, uh, we'd like to have, have them and do a recruiting program, whatever they did at Boonville. This is just not a group of people going out and having a good time shooting at each other with, with lamps. This goes a lot deeper. This is history and we're gonna follow the actual history as close as anybody ever can. Okay?
That's your earliest possible time though, because I'm closing in on a budget that I will be recommending to the board. To have to set an amount that probably not going to be able to exceed. So we need to stand formal, formal request. And the city's contribution will have to be a contract for services, just like we have with the Chamber of Commerce and with credit. Now, it occurs to me that if a significant portion of your budget is for advertising, we might be able to focus the contract in on that with the city money being available early while you're doing this fundraising elsewhere.
Yeah, very good. Right, I understand that and you're needing a lot, lot closer, harder figures than what we represent here. But as of now, we don't know, but we will know. Coffee back done? Okay, is there any other thing?
About when will you know?
Uh, boy, our feet are on fire, aren't they? Jim, when will we know? I, I, I would say within 30 days, we, we can make out, or, or before that, within 30 days, we can make out. What, what is your timing? When do you say you have to, Lynn?
We will adopt the budget at the March 4 meeting. It really needs to be done so it can be out to the public by the 1st of March.
Okay.
That means you backtrack and have lots of typing and stuff like that. Probably the middle of February is as late as I can let...
But we're talking about three weeks max.
General government meeting?
Uh, it would be nice, um, at least for...
February 10th?
We, we can get some figures all right, but, yeah. We didn't, we didn't anticipate this, we didn't, what we put together here is, was not a, a hard fast request. It was just to inform you what we're gonna have to be doing, is basically.
Obviously, the city can't fund the whole thing. From both a financial standpoint, I think, looking at the merit of the budget. But also, as I've discussed with you, um, security and help from the Public Works Department, moving stuff around and some force account things that, that, um, don't have as...
Well, you have to run waterline for one, but, uh, a number of things like that, right?
Oh, it doesn't gotta freeze, it doesn't have to be very deep in the...
Well, you got an overall picture of what, what we're trying to do and that, uh, we can get more specific very, very shortly in, in getting some figures put together. Uh, I have most of the figures, I say, that came from Boonville and other areas.
If they have contracts for services as Missouri cities, they should also have done.
What, what Mayor's pointed out is the chamber is, uh, volunteer work with the battlefield to help research and write some grants. I don't know if E-CIVUS would have, uh, maybe possibility of providing some grants on that.
Perhaps, I think. That's the kind of thing to start years of advancing. It may be possible, I wouldn't count it. I wouldn't put that into a budget.
Well, you have people to go to for a grant that we didn't. We've tried over, over the years just for the battlefield. They have had no success, really, I have to say that. We've got a big contribution from the banks and so on on certain... contribution from the banks and so on on certain things. But as far as a real grant or formalizing and writing a grant, you know, we tried at the state of Missouri, and it just, they're not interested.
They have lots of competition.
Well, I'm sure they do. Okay?
All right. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Jack. Could I ask a question real quick? Have you given any thought, just a chance to any historical society, either Boone or Ballard, can they...
Well, I can tell, most everybody is strapped. The Boone County Historical Society has got less money than we got at the Centaria Historical Society. I hate to tell you that, folks, but there's, yeah. And we're going to go to this, we can ask for some money from the Centaria Historical Society, and we're going to ask the chamber for some. We got a lot of avenues to go out and ask for money. I just wanted to come here first and let you all know what we're doing.
And you do have people who lined up and already told you that they will support monetarily.
Oh, I, there's two, three people in Columbia that I've talked to, and they said, well, I'll give you a thousand. And I said, I'll give you a thousand. That happens, but we've got to get it all put together in one big request package, so everybody knows where we're staying.
Thank you. All right, public area is unscheduled. Is that still okay? Action agenda. My name is scrap metal, scrap metal bits.
As we mentioned in a couple committees ago, we have a pile of scrap powerline wire and also some scrap metal pieces from the water car, primarily. They were all put in a pile over at Electric Barn. We have a pile of bids, and we have a valuation from people who've looked at it and thought they might want to buy it. Pretty clear winner was Frank John, one thousand and fifty-one dollars. We think that's a fair price, and we recommend that you allow us to sell that script pile of scrap.
So, entertain a motion for the scrap metal bits?
So moved.
All right. Motion second to accept the bids for scrap metal from Frank John, the amount of one thousand and fifty-one dollars. All those that favor that? He's the winner. Permission license, unscheduled, are still okay?
Still looking, sir.
All right, legal. Authorizing municipal library district election on increasing operating tax for municipal library district. This is ordinance requires two readings. And if you recall, the library was here last week and giving us reasoning behind the call for the operating levy increase. Do I have any questions?
Just point out what was made, point out before, that the voters only will be the voters of the library district, which is less than the entire city.
Right, the nineteen sixty-five library.
Sixty-five, actually. There's some very major recent divisions that won't have the same money, but they won't have to pay taxes either.
They're part of the Boone County, Daniel Boone.
Their tax money goes to the Boone County library. Oliver Simmons, would you introduce this one, please?
Yes, sir. Bill number please.
Twenty-six eighty.
I move the bill number twenty-six eighty to be given its first reading by title only.
Second. Have a motion second to bill number twenty-six eighty to give its first reading by title only. All those that favor that?
Aye.
Post, continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance calling a special election on the question whether to increase the operating tax levy for the City of Centaria, Missouri Municipal Library District. I move the bill number twenty-six eighty to be given its second reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion second to bill number twenty-six eighty to give it its second reading by title only. All those that favor that?
Aye.
Post, continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance calling a special election on the question whether to increase the operating tax levy for the City of Centaria, Missouri Municipal Library District. I move the bill number twenty-six eighty to be adopted by Roll Call.
Second. I have a motion second to bill number twenty-six eighty to be adopted by Roll Call. All those that favor that?
Aye.
Post, Roll Call, please.
Alderman Norman?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Simmons?
Yes.
Alderman Walton?
Four.
All right, I revoke bill number twenty-six eighty passes. Now becomes ordinance number...
Twenty-seven forty-nine.
Purchasing, nothing figured?
Still looking, sir.
All right. Anyone have any old business? All right, new business, payroll appointments. If you have one appointment to make tonight, Denny Rush kind of raised this up on us last week about the appointment of a new firefighter. I have a application for Travis Weiken?
We.
Weiken? And I've looked over his resume. He's currently on the Boone County Fire District, so seems well qualified. He's been through the E and P course, so that's a benefit. All right, post, if it brings up a favor of domination? Second. I have a motion second to accept the mayor's appointment of Travis Weiken to the fire department. All those that favor that?
Aye.
Post, all right. Yes, I did speak with Pat Olson about the library board vacancy, and they still don't have anybody to recommend for that position.
Kathy Cullen.
Kathy Cullen has expressed interest in our finding, finders committee for the land replacement, so what's the deadline for the application?
March third.
March third.
It's not a hard deadline. The ad says we will start looking at resumes at after that time. I'll let you know that we have at least four on hand already.
Okay, we have four, okay, so. All right. So, March third.
It's Monday.
We'll most likely have a meeting maybe six o'clock or six thirty that evening before the council meeting, to discuss some things. Do you, Alderman, have new business?
Lynn? Two things. First of all, it's been hanging over our head for, for a year or more, that some of the phone companies have been suing most of the municipalities concerning what constitutes telephone service, which is a subject of grocery receipts tax, and what At least part of that has been adjudicated now and in our favor. It was a part that was handled by the municipality. And involved AT&amp;T customers, I believe. There, as far as I know, isn't it still settled on the same basis involving CenturyLink, CenturyTel? That is not settled, as far as I know, although having a president in one does help our case in another, probably the same judges. In any case, we're not talking large amounts of money, not the primary portion of our grocery receipts tax, just a small amount, and we'll let you know how much it was about. Additionally, Mayor wanted me to report that we have had, thanks to Larry, one donation towards upgrading the signs for the real softball team through M. We have another donation that takes care of at least two more signs, and Mr. Angel has said that he will take care of the last two signs. I don't have much money in hand, but we have the money in hand for the other three, and the signs have been ordered, so as things present themselves, they'll get replaced, they'll be somewhat abbreviated in text, but the one sign will refer to all three championship years.
Do you need any help collecting?
I don't think so.
I know some where to draw it, one hand.
No, I'm not worried.
All right.
I just wanted to let everybody know that election, finally, for the election, for the April election, does end at five tomorrow. We have three people that have filed so far. Alderman Ward one, Andrea Olra, who's here tonight, and then Landon Magley has filed, and Art Gollins has also filed for Ward one.
So, there's no one for John?
No one for Ward two. No one has filed for Ward two.
I'm working on it yet.
Better work harder.
Faster.
We'll keep them calm, love.
They can get before five, that's better.
Yeah, that's a really good thing. All right. Thank you, Andrew. As mayor rise?
I have a couple things. An interruption, I need to apologize, Mr. Chance. I should have put an interruption once up. I just went over there and looked, but I guess Larry in Riker's garage, it was fully engulfed, engulfed, I guess, and there was, it was a lot. That's why I didn't...
Including a cycle?
Did motorcycle with any?
I suspect there are. I don't know. I haven't been over there, but it's, Station Ten is there, right, James? Station Ten is there, as well as Centaria. So, that won't be good.
Flames roll out right after they look like they got out down really quick.
And did give good...
I'm not qualified to judge that, but I can tell you the paper's still on the outside of the sheet metal, so this is...
And as if anyone in the room needed help, how long has it been, Mayor, since Raymond Cooper passed away?
Since when?
Well, okay.
I don't, I don't know the exact day. Four years.
Four years. It's been four years, January seventeenth of two thousand and ten. They went over and decorated the graves we do every year, a day either side of that line. Marcel, Sandy, and Bryn Moss, and Stockton visited with Ray's mother just to, got as much energy as two people should have. She's always just so appreciative of her efforts. Four years ago on seventeen.
Thank you for doing that, Larry.
No, don't, please.
All right, anyone else have as mayor rise? Very much. Thanks very much.